To me. I hereby open the work session of the Committee for Citizen Involvement. Could we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Chair Salazar.
Present.
Vice Chair Bergen.
Here.
Commissioner Quavilla.
Here.
Commissioner Gill. Commissioner Buck.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
And Commissioner Schmuck.
Here.
All right, well, thank you. I'm gonna just start off if that's all right.
Sure, I know we don't have anybody joining. It doesn't look like we have anyone else joining online besides us, but should I read the instructions for comment?
No.
Okay, great. And then.
Yeah, so I first will introduce Haley Campbell. She's to my right here. I don't think she's been presented to the Planning Commission previously, but we hired her as a senior planner to continue on with the code update where Mark left off, although given other requirements such as the Climate Friendly Equitable Communities rules, I'm not exactly sure that she'll be continuing with that Phase Three. I think that's on hold for now, but invited her to come to hear your discussion tonight. And then also online, we have Mark Rust, who is our current planning manager, and Chelsea Hartman, Senior Planner, who I think you did meet previously, but she is picking up the Comprehensive Plan Map Clarification Project where Monica has gone on leave. And so she's here to participate and listen to your discussion. And then Molly Marcarian is on vacation. So anyway, I don't have a PowerPoint presentation, but I just wanted to give a quick introduction to this and then turn it over for your discussion. So we don't necessarily do this every year, even though we're supposed to, according to the Program for Citizen Involvement, do an annual review of the engagement with the community to make sure that we're covering the different phases of the planning process and ensuring that there's involvement in all of those phases and presenting information that's understandable and gathering their input. And so like we did last year, in a similar format, a spreadsheet for each of the planning projects and listed the target audience tactic outreach participation. And then staff put together a report, kind of a summary with a big section on reflections of outreach for this past year. Are, we have a couple additions to that since the packet was published. And so I'm gonna call on Chelsea to share her screen so that you can see where we have made some additions. And these are for your consideration. Ultimately, we want this report to include your input, and then we would pass it along to City Council in a memo so that they would be familiar with what we've done over this past year in terms of community outreach. So go ahead and go down. Chelsea, to the first one. So reflections on outreach this past year. So recognizing that our resources are limited. We need to scale and scope community engagement accordingly, and so kind of emphasizing that point by prioritizing engagement efforts within a project. And then under using appropriate tactics, adding a bullet, the use of online tactics can be helpful for streamlining and ease of engagement, but sometimes face-to-face engagement is better at creating understanding, especially when there are opposing views. And then along the way, include communication staff upfront and in the initial planning efforts to streamline the creation of a community engagement plan. So the people who are staff here tonight are mainly planners plus our attorney and Planning Commission Assistant, but we do have some communications staff available that we work with. We don't, they don't have a lot of capacity, but they do have expertise, and so they help us create these engagement plans and carry out some of the tactics. And so this is a point that they brought up to just to make sure that planners are engaging with them early on. And then under the elected officials category, where there, when there is turnover or changes on the council, it is important to check in with the council as a whole to confirm that they agree with the stated project purpose statement and that it is still relevant. And then finally, under other considerations, even when there is no project budget requiring staff to track costs, staff should still create a project number to be able to track time and be able to communicate the entirety of the project effort. So those are up, have been added, and we can keep those included if you agree with them, but we're also looking to have feedback on any of the others. And I think I'll turn it back over to Chair Salazar for to lead your discussion.
Thanks, Sandy. Yeah, I definitely appreciated the materials, the the spreadsheets that kind of gave an at-a-glance look at every individual project. I think that was helpful for for realizing, we're talking in our planning meeting yesterday, that yeah, it's just amazing to see what we've done in the past year and all the the issues that we've worked on. So yeah, it's it's great to see the breadth of of actions that we've taken and and engagement that's happened in the past year. So yeah, just like to open it up. We can have a pretty open conversation. I have a number of questions, but before we dive into those, just wanted to see if in general, if there are any thoughts on those additions to the the review as presented to us just now. Commissioner Quavilla.
I guess. Thank you, Chair. Could you bring up that document again, Sandy? In particular, I think it was nearly the last bullet point. Yes, it's the one saying when there's a turnover or changes on the council to check in with the council as a whole to confirm that they agree with the stated project purpose statement and that it is still relevant. If a project is initiated by one city council, and then there is a change in the city council, is, is it? I guess it's a question for legal staff. Could a project be entirely changed by a new city council or is that generally done? Or it's it's just a little concerning for me that a lot of time might be expended in a project and then because of a council turnover that the project might be canceled.
Yeah.
Or significantly changed.
Great. That's a great question. Legally, absolutely, absolutely. A new council coming in can revisit the need for a project, the scope of a project. There are going to be ramifications to that, potentially cost ramifications. There could be planning, you know, planning law and use law percussion, like repercussions of that and having to potentially, you know, go back and renotice certain things. But a new changeover in the governing body, you know, be that Planning Commission or City Council can definitely impact the success of projects or the changes to their scope over time. That is not been common historically for Springfield to see that. I think because historically, our city council has been pretty prone to working toward consensus as a whole. In terms of local government, that's somewhat unusual. And a lot of other, you know, local governments or jurisdictions where things move forward on slimmer margins, you can see much bigger changes in the direction of planning projects with changeovers in the, you know, the council or the commission. It's just not, it's not been historic for Springfield, but if it were to happen in the future, it would be a kind of a normal local government thing, although not really part of our, our, our his history as a city.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks. Thanks for that question. And we can certainly come back to this question towards the end after we've had a little bit more chance to to discuss and think about the whole, the year as a whole as well. So are there any questions about community engagement efforts that we've undertaken in the last year? Yeah, Commissioner Quavilla.
Again, thank you, Chair. I'm just wondering if we can have a general idea of whether some of the suggestions that have been made by the Committee for Citizen Involvement have resulted in expansion of input from various citizens groups. I know that a number of us have made suggestions as to outreach to the business community, the tribes, et cetera. And I was just wondering whether any of our suggestions have been followed up on, or is this like an outreach that we've done that has yet has not gathered much fruition?
I'll take that question. I would say yes. I mean, we, we do anything that you have put into a, you know, revisions to a community engagement plan. Though in that sense that you've approved some changes, you know, we follow those community engagement plans in in our outreach. There are times when you make suggestions that aren't necessarily incorporated into the community engagement plan with specifics. But we do do most of those, and I'd have to go back, you know, looking at each one individually to give a comprehensive answer. But for example, I know, you know, Commissioner Gill has often brought up involving the tribal community, and I think that that really, not itself alone, but that was part of the prompting for us to really look into how can we engage them? Because the first time that, and this came up, I think, really during the Natural Resources Project, when we were doing the Wetland and Riparian Inventory Work. And Monica had reached out to the tribes but had no response. And so thinking, well, you know, what might be a better approach, a better tactic to engage with them? And at the same time, the Department of Land Conservation and Development was wanting to provide some more expertise in terms of reaching some communities that are typically underrepresented. And so while we thought, well, let's use their expertise to to reach that segment of the population. DLCD never actually provided that assistance to us. And so instead, we made an arrangement with DLCD to use the money that they would have used for an expert to put toward a consultant that we could use along with Willamalene. And so using the money that we had gotten from the state and then Willamalene's contribution, we were able to hire a consultant that you heard about somewhat when Willamalene presented the outcome, but that set up a whole dialogue about how better to engage with the American. I'm gonna get it wrong now. How we American native, Alaska native, Native American, I think is the preferred term from that came out of that that community within the Springfield area. And they ended up having a specific activity that several staff and one of our city councillors attended. And there's a report that has come out of that. So that is one example. Commissioner Gill, thanks for coming. I was just sharing how, you know, you're prompting to really engage with the tribes pushed us to go beyond what we had typically done and seek ways to really engage with that population here in Springfield. And some of your other suggestions, Commissioner Quavilla, in particular, in terms of environmental groups and such, we have, you know, we reached out to them for the particular projects that you had identified, but then we would make sure that we consistently engage with them so that when we get to the floodplain work, we're continuing to notify those same groups. And, you know, carrying that through into the next projects. So those are the two examples that come to mind in response to your question.
Thanks, Sandy. And I think I'd like to thank Commissioner Quavilla for teeing up our next question, too. I know that, looking over the the past year and the community engagement efforts that have occurred there, I've noticed a pattern of a lot of times there, there are similar suggestions from project to project. So as a baseline, are there any particular groups that we think should be included for all projects regardless of what the specific project is? I know that from project to project, we've often given the advice to reach out to environmental groups is a very specific example. Tribes is another example. So is that something that the are those two, two groups? Or any other groups, groups that planning staff should be planning or any other staff should be planning on incorporating into their outreach in any future project? Or conversely, should we just really be taking it project by project, case by case, and seeing kind of tailoring the outreach very specifically and and not having specific groups that we reach out from across projects? Commissioner Buck?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I know that, I know that you, you mentioned a number of, number of groups. I, I just wanted to also just kind of mention that when we're looking at inclusion, I mean, you know, we want to include as many groups as possible, but we have a significant and growing Latino population and and so just wanted to mention them specifically. I know that you did bring them up, and that was a part of the groups that you mentioned, but I think that making sure that we're including them as well as tribes and environmental groups and all those, those that we've discussed. I think they have some specific needs and want to make sure their voices are heard in that discussion as well.
Thanks, Commissioner Buck. Commissioner Gill?
Thanks, and sorry for being late. Um, I I think that as the list grows, it seems as if staff has sort of maintained that list and continued to do the outreach and, or at least look at that list and consider that list as it's appropriate to the project that is happening. So I guess I would encourage, well, first of all, I want to say I have seen this effort over the year. I think it is impressive. And one of the pieces that I really appreciate about it is working really hard to try to find organizations where you can access the people that you're trying to reach, because it's just hard to reach individuals on the street, as you might say. So so the idea of continuing to seek where people are is, I think, an important one to think about. And and so I think in one of the more recent ones, I think they might not have been included before, but in one of the more recent ones, ARC was one of the groups that was connected with for conversation, might have been the Main Street one. But, you know, they have, they serve a lot of people with alterabilities, but they are also in an interesting part of town. And so they have some perspective in just their location also and how people use that part of town. So I think it's important to, let's just keep growing the list and then seeing where it's appropriate. One area to reach sort of a variety of cultural folks is through their churches, which is an interesting form of outreach, but there are several varieties of churches in this community, and those people are really community minded. Or they have a community in those spaces, so that could be a possibility. So I think keeping that list and then just looking at it as where it's appropriate and then bring, being as broad as possible and continuing to find those organizational ways to connect with people and collect their thoughts is great. And also convey, I guess the other thing I want to say that I think has been powerful to see, I think, especially in the floodplain one and even the more recent map conversation has been not just soliciting input, but helping convey the significance of those projects to the community in encouraging them to participate and seeing where helping them see where it is important for them and how they might be able to contribute to that conversation, which is a little bit different than saying, hey, tell us what you think about this without any of that context.
Great. Thanks, Commissioner Gill. Any other thoughts on that question about specific groups or populations that we should be, that staff should be particularly keeping in mind for outreach? All right, great. Well, are there any outreach, any new outreach tactics that we explored over the past year that we found to be particularly beneficial?
I think that our online open houses, that that's not just this year, but it is still relatively new. Has been a good way to use like the story map, and if there are embedded questionnaires, like I think Mark's project on the development code had some questionnaires embedded in that, and then was and they were also available elsewhere. I think that sort of open house, but virtual, over time, has been pretty effective at making information available in a time and place where a lot of people can access it, not everybody, but still a big part of our population and at the pace that they need. And I think it's, I think, it's a, at least fortunately, we've had some staff who've been able to really put time into making it an engaging experience from my perspective, anyway. So I think that has worked well and is a fairly new tool or tactic.
Yeah, one tactic that I appreciated early on in the year was around the floodplain map and just going to where the people are. And I remember with the floodplain map, there was specific flyers that were put out at trailheads and where people were yeah, engaging with with the the spaces that were impacted. So I remember, yeah, that being helpful.
I think that was actually for the Natural Resources Study, but
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking of, actually, now that you mentioned it. But I remember it being helpful.
Mm hmm. Yes.
All right, Commissioner Gill, and then Commissioner Quavilla.
I agree on that virtual open house in, in an additional way. Well, I think Cindy was sort of bringing up in the, at their own pace. I think that those are also helpful even for people who show up to a public hearing or to an in-person open house to like be able to go digest it later, or if they don't feel prepared to have the conversation yet or provide input yet, that gives them the space to do it. It also gives them the space, those folks who show up in person and get something or get inspired or get frustrated or have opinions when they're talking to other people, they can show them a place to go do that. So that helps spread that possibility, which I think is really great. The other thing with those that I think is really powerful is, and I can't remember if it was Natural Resources or Floodplain, I feel like it was one of them, but had an actual like short video and to explain it. And the videos go a really long way, and they don't have to be super high-tech version. Sometimes they can even be, you know, copying your really clear, concise, short PowerPoint and presentations. So I, I think that that is another useful tool and also can be transcribed in other languages relatively easily. So it's a way to have a video, audio as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Quavilla.
Thank you, Chair Salazar. First of all, I think that it's really impressive, the outreach that is done by by the city in regard to just about everything. I think that it's really commendable and it's just been very impressive. Couple of things I think have really been well done are the follow-ups on individuals. And I noticed that that was something that was very well done in the Main Street safety. And I also like the particular outreach to individuals that's done on the mapping clarification project and on the floodplain, where these changes might possibly directly affect certain properties. The staff is actually going to those property owners and to the residents there and dialoguing with them about explaining the project and stuff like that. So again, I just think that the the city just does a really, really good job on the outreach. Should be very commended.
Thank you, Commissioner Schmunk.
Yeah, so thanks for those questions. I too had wanted to kind of know what had went on. Obviously, new to the committee, I I don't have some of the experience as to what has been done. Personally, I feel like the city goes out of its way to try to to do that outreach. So that's my perception. You know, obviously, continue that. And then I want to be sure that we don't the squeaky wheel gets the grease. I assume we avoid, you know, just because one person yells the loudest, we would gravitate to that opinion. Obviously, we as commissioners have to balance that. But also, if some of these events had peripheral issues, not necessarily germane to the, to getting the public out for something, but expose them to some other aspects related to that, and that might get them to come back next time. Because I know it's a real challenge getting folks to participate. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I had also mentioned as a tactic, I know I've mentioned this before, but a tactic that I've appreciated, especially around, particularly around the Main Street Safety Plan, was the fact sheets that went out to kind of counter some of the misinformation that was circulating. So I really appreciated that. All right. And I think that leads us to a great, now that we've talked about some of the specific outreach and and we can think about what what tactics work best. So how do we, or what tactics work best for particular projects? Because we've done outreach around small projects, large projects, everything in between. So how do we best scale the outreach to match the type and scope of project? And that's a question for commissioners, not staff. Yeah, I think that's a particularly difficult one to try to to wrap our heads around, especially Commissioner Gill.
Uh, well, I think I think staff has been pretty good at that. So I guess I would say, starting with the properties or generally in in a planning situation, properties that are most directly impacted would, you know, be the highest priority to reach. So like Commissioner Quavilla mentioned, To reach. So like Commissioner Quivell mentioned, the the work that city staff has done to directly contact those property owners. And then. Folks with the vested interest. So if it's a large business impact, then, you know, you might look for those business communities. Or if it's a transportation related thing. Those thematic ones would be the second priority. But still putting all the general information out there and still continuing to try to grow that list of people who receive. Kind of the ongoing information from planning, like the cool newsletters that are coming out periodically now to help those. Especially again, coming back to organizations. Having them sort of get aware of. What this stuff all means for them so that when there is an ask for their participation, they feel. Like they have something to contribute and they understand how it impacts them. So. I guess sort of. More setting priorities based on the impacts, but still trying to continue to be broad. Because again, every time sort of like what Commissioner Schmunk was talking about. The more that you can engage with them, the more there's they continue to pay attention and the more that they. Will participate in future times. So I guess it would be like a ranking of priority based on impacts, but try to continue the broadest outreach possible.
Great, thank you. Are there any other final thoughts on any of these questions? We have. Yeah, a half hour until we about a half hour till our regular session starts. That concludes all the questions that we had prepared. Yeah, open to having a more broad discussion about outreach in general. Or also come back now that we've had a chance to think about the year a little bit more. Also open to any other additional thoughts or ideas for the report that will go to council. So I'll leave the floor open and yeah. If anyone has any thoughts, feel free to raise your hand. Commissioner Quivell.
Yes, thanks again. Just wanted to say that I've noticed in a couple of city council meetings that the city council has said. We need to do outreach on something that they're discussing, like for instance, the other night they were discussing. Allowing RVs to be used as temporary housing. And they said something about wanting to do outreach and I was wondering if the council has ever got gotten back to the CCI to say. Have you got some ideas for outreach? So I I think that that would be something that, you know, would be in our wheelhouse. And maybe we could provide more input to the council to assist them in that type of thing in the future.
Yeah, I am not aware that they have that the council, at least since I've been working in Springfield, which is over a little over six years. Have made that specific request. Whether that has happened through committee liaisons, you know, it's possible. But I think your point is, and we're recognizing that. We. There is more connection with some of the other non traditional land use planning staff. And so we did include the housing outreach activities in this report this year. Which we hadn't done in the past. And. So I think, you know, at least internally, you know, we talk together. You know, the Katie and Erin and Penny are all part of our planning team. Or planning section. But I do think that those will inform each other, at least at the staff level. And maybe in that broader sense, as we start to. Pull some of their work into the land use realm through the upcoming housing needs analysis. And housing production strategy that will be done at the same time as we're updating the consolidated plan, which is following the federal guidelines. Under the housing and urban development requirements. So. I've taken your question and I've gone elsewhere with it, but given me the opportunity to. Make those comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Gill.
Sorry, just keep talking tonight. I. Sort of bouncing off of what Commissioner Webola brought up is I think two, there are two things. One. If I think that there is a real opportunity to. Use. This body in broader ways to gather more information and be able to. Provide. That. Content to city council. I think one of the other. Challenges with public engagement. Is sometimes we. Have invited people or we have public comment time on our schedule, either as CCI or as Planning Commission. Or through the public hearing processes to hear comments, but they aren't always things that we can take into consideration in that public hearing. Or that we can really respond to in the public comment period outside of hearings. And I'm just wondering if that. Somewhat hinders ongoing community participation if they feel like. They are being heard, but nothing's being done with what's being said. So just sort of a. I'm just stealing this opportunity as a moment to think about, think a little bit more broadly about what CCI and Planning Commission could be and do. And what it, what those do in other communities as far as. Collecting community input and providing some context and big picture to city council. Because they have a ton on their plate. All the time. And also, I think one of the challenges with public engagement. Especially in these bigger processes is when direction from city council. Or potentially the process that's happening is limiting in a not very. Clear way. So for example, with the with the development code update. The direction from city council was to not dig into the needs or. Challenges or structure of that except to make it clearer and make the process easier for development. So when we, so when we have the reviews and we have the public hearing around that. And people want to bring up those other issues, we say, but we're not talking about that right now. If there could be a way to at least capture that. And provide it in a, I don't know, formal is the right word, but a. An actual piece of the process to city councils so that that could be built up as a future possibility, even if they don't want to open up. That thing that we're working on to everything at that moment. Or like this, like the map process, the map update that we're working on is naturally going to bring up zoning questions. So is there a way to legally and appropriately, but like. Create a space, a parking lot where that can live, where people know it lives and it's going to move forward in either staff level or city council level. Because that's the moment where they're thinking about it, right? And I I feel like there's a little bit of limitation in there that. Wouldn't be too hard to open up the possibilities for without. Opening up the floodgates or doing the process. Inappropriately, but still capture that and make sure that staff and city council know about these. Know about these things and they don't just live in the recording somewhere. I don't know if that all makes sense, but thanks.
Oh, thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, so I guess continuing to brainstorm just a bit. So I think we're talking about marketing, what this. Commission's doing. You know, I've been thinking about this and not to tell anybody how to, what to do in terms of the Zoom. So I'm doing Zoom today. I'm kind of out of the weather, so I didn't want to get in the building. But I'm wondering, what what about sort of an event quarterly where. The committee commission gets into the same room or comes to a meeting in person. Again, I, you know, as soon as I say that, I'll need to avail myself of the Zoom opportunity because they'll have to be out of town, but. Just an idea to, you know, and then just point that out at the committee or the community, maybe that have that an ongoing thing where the, you know. The commission's in the house tonight and, you know, we're going to have balloons, whatever. I mean. So. I guess if that makes sense as sort of food for thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson.
Yeah, I just want to first congratulate staff on the great report. It was really insightful and. And as was kind of alluded to, I think earlier, some other people said the same thing. I think maybe Commissioner Schmunk also knew. I'm kind of new to. I'm I'm not aware of kind of the past efforts that the planning department has has put to to make their notice successful and public engagement successful. So it seems to be. Great. So commend you for that. I didn't really have any recommendations as far as have the report in front of me. I guess tactics per se, but I guess food for thought. I'm not really sure how this can be implemented effectively. But in my prior experience, what made comments. Most useful to staff, the planning staff and eventually sometimes hearings officers. Was those comments that were substantive, meaning they addressed applicable approval criteria within code. And there was, it was really easy to kind of see those who did their homework and who didn't. And a lot of what it came down to was education. So I don't think it would necessarily be the city's responsibility per se to educate people on how to provide substantive comments. That address approval criteria. However. That's got something that I was actually Commissioner Gill kind of inspired me on that is kind of that education pieces. How we provide people with. How we provide people with the knowledge to successfully and to successfully address. Decisions and proposals that are occurring in close proximity to themselves that will impact their daily lives and future lives. And so kind of I just had, you know, I don't know if there's, I was actually, as we were just talking and looking up. Trying to find a a past, you know, planning notice from the planning department for a for a historical land use decision. I wasn't able to, but. I assume on those notices, we provide, you know, applicable code that possibly is going into. That is going to be considered for a for an upcoming decision. Anything, anything like that to kind of tell people, hey, just so you know, this is what, this is the process the city will go through to approve this. So. Unfortunately, what people don't, I think. Realize is, you know, you can provide as much comment, as much commentary as you want, but unless, but if the application meets the. Applicable approved criteria is going to get approved. It just is nine out of 10. Because they went through the process, but if you don't agree with that, here's a way to effectively voice your opinion and try to argue your points. And here's the code. And so, and it was just a thought that I had going through my lines and again, I'm not sure what that would look like from the city's perspective, but again, providing with them. Providing people with the education in addition to the actual notice that something's happening. Those two should be married in some way if possible.
Thank you. I think those are all great ideas. Yeah, we definitely want to, our purpose as a committee for citizen involvement is to. Get citizens involved and to encourage the public to get involved in whatever way they can in. In these planning processes. So we know how how much that shapes the the city and the future of the city. And we want folks to to get involved in that and have their voices heard. So really appreciate all those ideas. Any final thoughts before we wrap up? Any overarching thoughts on on outreach in general?
Chair Salazar. So I'd like to respond to a few of the comments that commissioners have made thus far. And so for Commissioner Gill, you were mentioning how some people brought up issues during the development code update that we didn't really. Match with the council's project scope. But as you may recall, we did get a planning commission. I forget, Mark maybe can say what it was called, but alternative recommendation or something where there. Along with the formal recommendation for approval, there was another document that we captured the commission's. Thoughts for going forward and that shared with council. So Mark, do you want to speak a little bit more about that?
Yeah, I don't know how much you can hear me. Okay, I assume. Yeah, great. I don't know how much detail you want to go into, but. Yeah, I agree with Sandy. We did. And I think especially Commissioner Gill, you'll recall, we provided that supplemental recommendation to the city council. And they acknowledged that there was a lot of work that went into that. Additionally, we did try and capture through the testimony of even if there was testimony. That may not have been directly addressing some of the updates we were trying to do. That that testimony was still captured. So we appreciate the. The direction from the planning commission to do that for sure, though.
And we've kept that and shared that supplemental recommendation with Haley so that that and our housing staff as well. So that's a basis for future work that we can use. You know, it's not any kind of a. You know, must do, but it certainly does give the commissions. Recommendation at that time as a starting point to work from. A second point I wanted to make is. My view when we want to get public comment is we really only want to. Set up the ask. If we're prepared to follow up. Because I think if we just ask for input and then people don't see anything happen with it. And they'll get discouraged. And so I, over time, in in this career have. Sometimes drawn back from trying to really fully engage. If I'm not sure that there's a way for us to move forward with whatever we're going to get from that. So that's just kind of sharing my background context perspective on that. But that, at the same time, I do think that there's a place to capture these. Sort of off topic or tangents or whatever. And, you know, that we, it's incumbent upon us to share those with other departments or other projects or whatever as we can. Because that is input that's gathered, but then it's it's sometimes harder for people to see the follow up. And then finally, in response to Commissioner Thompson, this isn't really necessarily helping educate people how to provide comment. But I do think one nice feature of Springfield, Oregon speaks is it will show the approval criteria right within the site. For decisions that we have coming up that use that. And I think that's a nice feature of having gone to Springfield, Oregon speaks that makes it really apparent. In addition to being in the notice, when they go to look at the agenda item, it's right there.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Bergen.
Thank you. And my apologies for not interacting prior to now. I'm actually at home incredibly ill. So I, just a couple of things I wanted to question. The first was, I know early on in. The COVID era, city council was doing a good job of, or staff was doing a great job of putting up the synopsis of. City council meetings on social media. And I'm curious if we are utilizing social media to get out what it is that we're doing, even if there's not. Action required from the public. That would be my first thing. And then the second is sort of just. A comment on what you had just mentioned, Sandy, and this is, please don't take this in any way. please don't take this in any way of saying um, how I feel you should or shouldn't do. But I feel that it's our role to continue whether we can or can't do things with public comment. I think it's our role to fiercely actively seek that public comment, even if it's just a thank you so much for your input. Here's where we can file it, um, it makes me a little bit apprehensive when I hear that we don't always pursue that a hundred percent. Um, public perspective is not always that we always are always transparent, and so I think that we need to maintain that level of transparency, and maybe I misunderstood what was being said, but I think it's really important that our public feels that their voice is being heard, even if it's not um, applicable to the, what it is that we're specifically seeking. And then um, the final thing was earlier, we had the conversation and I could have misunderstood this as well, but about if we are going to seek um, input from specific groups within the community based upon what we're looking for. Um, and it is my opinion that I think we should at bare minimum do a slow trickle to all of the groups that we have established connections with. Um, and then hyper focusing on ones that are more relevant to this, because what I would fear is our community would see that we only are seeking their input when it's relevant to us. Um, and I don't want them to have that perception at all. Um, so if I'm misunderstanding any of that, please forgive me and um, I'm hoping I'll be able to hang on for our next meeting in um, uh, in a little bit, because I'm not doing too great there, so sorry about that. Thank you for hearing me out, hopefully my string of thoughts made connections.
No, thank you, we appreciate your, your input and hope you feel better. Um, Commissioner Gill, or um, before you go, Commissioner Gill, Sandy, did you want to respond to any of those?
I, I think she, I, I think I understood, she made perfect sense. I, um, I don't think she misunderstood anything, um, I think it's, yeah, I mean, it's always that challenge of, yes, we want to hear from you, yes, we value your input. Um, I think it's just frustrating sometimes when um, as a staff person, they're telling me something and there's nothing I can really do with that information. Um, so uh, that doesn't mean it's not important. Um, and you know, if we share it broadly enough, then maybe there is somebody who can do something with that information.
And I think um, just to briefly interject before I'm going to you, Commissioner Gill, I think um, I think it's important to, to recognize that as we seek input and continued input from the city, we've mentioned how, how helpful it is to citizens to hear specific responses to their queries, um, if they're related or not related. But that, we do have to recognize that that takes a um, a, a toll on staff time. And the more output we seek, the more um, time that is needed by staff to commit to responding to the output that we seek and, and um, and the, even posting a post on social media takes staff time, so um, knowing that we have um, uh, limited hours in all of our days, how do we spend those appropriately for the, the projects that we're working on? Um, Commissioner Gill.
Thanks, uh, yeah, thanks so much for bringing up that example from the development code update. Um, I think it's model that would be very interesting to try to use in other, in other projects where things come up that, and, and ideas and thoughts and um, approaches come up and they're outside of the scope, but um, could be captured and shared in a similar way, so I'm glad you brought that up and thank you. And I appreciated uh, when that happened, and I think the whole planning commission spent a lot of good thoughtful time on that process, so um, it uh, it was a meaningful component of that project for sure.
Thank you, um, Commissioner Quivela.
Thank you, Chair Salazar, um, just wanted to go ahead and close off uh, my thoughts on this, that uh, Oregon land use goal number one is citizen participation. And it doesn't state any place what constitutes input from a citizen and where this is valid or where this is not valid, it just says that we're supposed to be here and we're supposed to have a, a committee for citizen involvement and we're supposed to listen, so. If there's sometimes the comments are germane to the subject, that's great, if sometimes they're not. Sometimes we can help direct people to uh, other, the fire department or other people who might be more knowledgeable about their concerns, but the CCI and the planning commission really is there to listen to the citizens.
If you can see me, chair.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Christina.
Also, I think that just triggered in me, you know, there, there are requirements under the law for, as you, as you all pretty much, at least the season commissioners know, there are requirements under the law for quasi judicial hearings, and sometimes, you know, I give a, I get a long legalistic spiel at the beginning of those hearings. Some of that language is required by state law, we can deviate, you know, I can add in extra or take out some of the not required language. Um, if commissioners ever have ideas on a better way to deliver the message about what a quasi judicial hearing is, um, or how to more effectively to communicate to the public who may show up for a, you know, a decision that's limited to criteria of approval um, in a way that doesn't turn them off from wanting to participate, if you can't consider, you know, the issue they have with their neighbor that is not germane to criteria of approval, but really matters to them and may matter to the, you know, the city in general, but just, you know, there are those times where I tell you, you can't consider something and that could, you know, shut off people who have taken the time to come down to city hall or log into Zoom, so. I just wanted to add in that, you know, I'm very individually or as a commission, very open to feedback and input um, on the, you know, how we set up those hearings in advance to give the public the most confidence as possible, while also adhering to your legal obligations under Lady's Law. And if anyone wants a copy, you know, if anyone wants me to email them a copy of that script, feel free, like I would be happy to do that. You can just reach out even to Sarah and I can forward it, feel free to mark it up. I'll, you know, I'll consider, you know, any feedback I get and, and what the losses we specifically have to state, and then um, I'm always open to revising that, that speech.
Thanks, Christina, yeah, I think we're, we're all here to, to make sure that our communications and outreach are effective, that folks are feeling involved and that they have an outlet um, to speak to um, in, in city government. Um, all right, any closing thoughts? Um, if not, we can maybe take a few minutes uh, break and then reconvene at seven. Um, don't see any other hands, so I'll go ahead and uh, adjourn um, this work session and we'll come back together and at seven PM. Thanks, everyone. And I caught that Sandy, so I can uh, lead the pledge.
Now? Oh, no, no, yeah. The recording has resumed.
Thanks, Sarah. Just wait for commissioners to turn their cameras back on and then we'll um, convene.
Yes. It's warmer than my office. I think I am spoiled, I think like, well, in the summer it gets really hot in my office. Your office has like, you can close all the doors to any outside rooms. Except one.
All right, I think I see most everyone, so I hereby open the regular session of the planning commission. Sandy, could we get a roll call again?
Sure, Chair Salazar.
Present.
Uh, Vice Chair Bergen has signed off she um, for the regular meeting, so she's not here now. Uh, Commissioner Quivela?
Here.
Commissioner Gill?
Present.
Uh, Commissioner Buck?
Here.
Commissioner Thompson? And Commissioner Schmuck?
Here.
All right, thanks, everyone, um, do we have any adjustments to the agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from November first, twenty twenty-two and November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, are there any corrections to the minutes as published in the packet? All right, seeing none, I uh, hereby approve the minutes as published in the packet. All right, and next we'll move to business from the audience. Uh, this is a time in our agenda for the public to provide testimony on any topic relevant to the planning commission. Sarah, is anybody else in there in the, in the just main room? No. Um, and let's see, I see no one else um, in this meeting with a raised hand. If you would like to provide testimony, please, um, or um, business, please uh, raise your hand now. And they'll have three minutes. All right, seeing no other business from the audience. Um, and Sarah, I'm assuming no one else is called in either?
No.
Okay, great. All right, and next is we'll move to um, business from the planning commission. So it looks like we've had three meetings since our last um, or three city council meetings since our last meeting. Um, I was assigned to report on the meeting from November twenty-first, and we can go in order from there, so. Um, in the city council work session and regular session, um, the council approved, so there were six openings, if you recall, for the B-PAC. Um, unfortunately, there were only four applicants for those six positions, so um, city council approved um, all four of those applicants, but there are still two um, open positions that they're seeking um, out of nine, so. Um, if you know anybody who's interested in, in B-PAC and bicycle or pedestrian safety and or both, uh, feel free, please encourage folks to apply. Um, we also um, uh, there was also um, approval of two, two new members of the um, of SPAC. Um, and then council look, was presented the same presentation that we received from Willam Lane regarding their comprehensive plan update. Um, most of their questions were regarding um, uh, specific uh, park amenities that they were looking for, so uh, they were very excited about um, the outreach that's been done so far for, for Willam Lane. All right, and that's my uh, report from the November twenty-first meeting, uh, Commissioner Buck.
Yeah, thank you for, for that, um, Commissioner Salazar, I, I do have a report that uh, for the November fourteenth meeting prior to the one you were at. Um, it didn't get reported on previously. Would you like me to give that now?
Yeah, yeah, go, go ahead.
Um, so the council met and um, did interviews for the library board as well as the historic uh, committee board. Um, and they heard uh, three applicants from each, and I believe they uh, approved uh, the applicant, all three of the applicants for the library board for various terms. Um, and two of the three for the uh, historic commission. Um, and then in the regular session, uh, it was largely budget focused. Um, so the purpose of the, the budget overview was to look at budgetary concerns and uh, for staff to get council's feedback on things that they would like addressed when the budget is proposed in the spring. Um, and so tho- those were the, the main topics covered in the November fourteenth meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Buck. Um, all right, and then um, in terms of the November twenty-eighth meeting, do you have a report, uh, Commissioner Gill?
Yes, so they um, had conversation regarding um, the camping um, ordinances, uh, so um, they went into pretty deep conversation about that, but it wasn't a decision-making moment. Um, and then they did comprehensive uh, plan uh, map clarification process and the climate-friendly and equitable cities um, parking uh, changes, code issues that they, that need to be addressed. Um, and then uh, there was also, that was at the work session. Um, but I must have missed, listened to the wrong one, because I listened to the same one you just reported on, so. I'm sorry about that, on the actual council meeting, I blew it and I don't have that, but I did um, have the um, oh, actually I ended up listening to two, so they did the upbeat and did the small business Saturday. Um, they had some review of a grant proposed from a justice assistance grant to um, have more secure wifi at the justice center and um, replace twenty gas masks that are out of good usability. Um, and they accepted the completed project of the High Banks Thurston overlay project. Um, and then there was a CEDA meeting that night as well, and um, there was only one resolution, which was so that the city manager could sign contracts during the holiday um, recesses. I just listened to two.
Overachiever. All right, thanks, Commissioner Gill. Um, and uh, Commissioner Quivela, it looks like you're assigned to uh, the December fifth meeting, have you had a chance to watch that or did you watch it in real time?
Uh, I, I watched it IRL, um, first of all, um, I think that actually I, I'm gonna um, help out on some previous stuff, I think that the parking in the climate-friendly that the city council actually decided, made a decision on that to pursue um, item one, uh, it was a uh, bullet point one, which is that the city will not have required parking in any areas of the city, if I'm not mistaken. And I think Christina can help us on that if I'm misspeaking that, and um, then let's see, so, okay, so that was that um, discussion, Christina, is there anything I misspoke on that?
No, that was, that was accurate, that was.
Okay.
I'll zoom down, we are.
Okay, and then on the uh, twelve-five, uh, last night's was a work and regular session. The first um, uh, in the work session was pretty interesting, because um, the, and again, Christina may need to help me with some of the um, nuances of this, but uh, the non-emergency medical transport in the city, the, basically, it's the ambulance service that is not for life-threatening uh, stuff, has in the past been taken, been contracted out to a company called Mid Valley Ambulance. And they've, uh, their contract is expiring and they do not want to renew. They seem to want to cut back on service uh, in smaller areas and they want more exclusivity for their services, so the fact that there are competing ambulances and transport um, is not something that they desire. So it sounds as if the fire department did a outreach to some companies that do provide uh, non-emergency transport elsewhere in the United States and uh, uh, kind of asking them if they'd be interested in participating in, in uh, setting a proposal to Springfield uh, for providing that service here, and it sounded as if there wasn't a lot of interest in Springfield elsewhere. So the recommendation from uh, the fire and life safety is that, and then again, please help me if I'm wrong on this, Christina, but would have uh, Eugene ambulance transport take over all non-emergency transport within the city of Springfield. And that again, that is exactly as um, Mid Valley ambulances was, which is basically it's a pay-for-play, so if you need an ambulance, you pay, it's not taxpayer-funded. And um, so they were actually talking about increasing the scope and the size of the scope and the size of the Eugene ambulance transport by an additional five am- ambulances to serve Springfield. And um of course, the personnel to do so and apparently probably some kind of facilities to do so as well. So there were a lot of questions in regard to that. Five, a lot of people concerned about the long term financial, short term financial and initial um costs to get a service like that up and running, because the fact that it will pay for itself eventually doesn't mean that there's the money to buy the five ambulances and set up the facility and hire the people initially, so that there'd be a considerable financial input needed at first. So and I think that was pretty much, there really was not a decision made on that, but it was just informational at this point in time. Is that correct, Christina?
No, I was actually at a Disney Junior concert last night during the work session and didn't listen to the work session, but that was a really complete summary of the issue, as I understand it.
Okay, great. I'm 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 happy happy for that. It's something that I didn't want to misspeak on, because I think it's probably of concern to everybody in the city. Okay, so uh and then the regular session. There was a te- teacher recognition, teacher of the year, city of Springfield. There was also thanks from the uh LDS leaders to the city for helping uh um really very positive uh input for our uh planning and legal staff on helping them uh work on the new LDS temple up near uh Gateway. And um so that was real nice recognition, including handing a shovel to the to the mayor. And then there were two um decisions that were made. One was allowing recreational vehicles as temporary housing in the city on private property. And that would be with registration. And um that sounded as if that was something that the council supported and that item passed. And then the other one was to waive uh systems development charges on city sewer, storm drain and transportation for but not, of course, M W M C or any other S D Cs that the city doesn't control uh for affordable housing. And that passed as well. And then under business from the council, the council committee appointments are coming up. So they're gonna be able, begin to discuss that amongst one another about, you know, who would like to be the planning commission liaison, who'd like to be the liaison to B pack and all the other uh community positions that the council serves on. So that was uh twelve five.
Thank you, Commissioner Quivela. Very thorough. And um just a reminder that for our uh we won't be meeting for a few weeks, um especially because uh December recess. So um for and between uh now and our next uh meeting, we'll have our representative or we'll have a report for the December twelfth meeting from Commissioner Thompson. January third will be Commissioner Schmunk. January ninth will be Commissioner Bergen and January seventeenth will be Commissioner Buck. All right, um any other uh re- business from members of the planning commission? All right, seeing none, uh any business from the development public works department?
So your upcoming meeting or your next meeting, as I was sharing with Commissioner Bergen during the break, will be on Wednesday, January eighteenth. So Martin Luther King Day is a holiday which pushes council meeting to Tuesday, and your meeting then is on Wednesday. Uh January eighteenth, uh we will not have a heavy agenda that evening. It will be the last meeting for Commissioner Gill and Commissioner Quivela, so we can express our appreciation to them for their service. Um and then you will also be electing a chairperson, vice chair, and making your own committee appointments to the Community Development Advisory Committee and the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. It'll be a while yet, I think, before we're able to fill um the two positions. Uh council wants to do another recruitment, but haven't launched that yet. So I'm not sure how quickly we'll be able to get two new commissioners appointed. But that's our current situation. And then I wanted, I'd sent an email out um planning ahead for a joint planning commission along with Lane County and the city of Eugene regarding update to our public facilities and services plan, which needs to be co adopted by all three jurisdictions. And it looks like most of you are available for a joint meeting on March fourteenth if needed, but Commissioner Buck, I hadn't heard back from you. So do you know now or could you follow up and let me know if you could be available for that Tuesday, March fourteenth?
Yes, I spoke with Sarah yesterday about that and I and told her that uh that that would, that those dates would be fine for me.
So um I will probably be learning in the next couple of weeks which of the dates in March it will be, and then I'll send you out an email to let you know whether to save all three dates in March or how that's gonna work, because our, we would have um a regular meeting on the first and third Tuesday as normal, assuming we have agenda items and then possibly one on the fourteenth. So we'll need you to keep those three placeholders for now. And that's all I have. And Christina.
I can real quick um update the planning commission that the city of Springfield, along with twelve other cities and one county, filed a petition for review um of the climate friendly and equitable communities rules, which you probably heard at council meetings we um had intended to do. That was filed, uh the petition for review, which will take a while to resolve, but also a motion for a stay to give some um immediate relief from having to try to comply with rules while we're also seeking um the court to, you know, review the rules and the rulemaking process that was used for them. We hope to have a answer from the court before the end of the calendar year. Um but you know, the Court of Appeals has a has a deadline of twenty one days, but there's not a consequence necessarily if they don't abide by that deadline. Um if anybody is interested in reading the court filings, let Sarah know and um I can, she can let me know and I can send those out. They're not confidential at this point. They're public documents. We don't have a response from the state yet, um but they will probably file a response on our motion sometime very soon. That's just a, just a brief update on something that you might have seen in the news that might be of interest.
Great, thanks, Sandy, and thanks, Christina. All right, and that brings us to the end of our meeting, so I hereby adjourn the planning commission regular meeting and we'll see you in January. Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy holidays.